A special meeting for the Normal Town Council for July 16th, 2018. Where is my clerk? Do you want to call a roll?
Mayor Coos.
Here.
Mr. Fritz and Mr. McBride.
Here.
Mrs. Cummings.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Here.
Mr. Preston.
Here.
Mr. McCarthy.
I want to go ahead and call a special meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order, and Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Mathie. Alderman Sage. Alderman Lumway. Alderman Burgess. Alderman Painter. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman Hallman. Alderman Bray. Alderman Black. Mayor Renner.
Here.
Thank you very much, and I'm going to turn the microphone over to my colleague, Mr. Mayor Chris K.
We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite. We do have a public comment session here. If I could see a raise of hands of people who would like to speak. I have one. One person. All right. Mr. Seela, why don't you come right up here? You know the rule. Oh, yeah, he can do it from right there. Please hold your comments to three minutes and state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Carl Seela. I'm from Normal. Let's see. Sorry, I wrote this out on my here. A multi-sport facility, like the one we will see discussed shortly, is a great idea for a community that finds itself flush with cla- the flush with cash due to an unexpected economic spike, that has a definite shortage of sports facilities already in the community, has no history of private undertakings to support sports, and lacks the entrepreneurial spirit and experience that would be needed to make a comparable private undertaking successful. However, Bloomington Normal meets none of those qualifications. Zero. We're at the end of the years where State Farm made our local economy almost indestructible as they are significantly reducing total wages. Our community has ISU, Wesleyan, multiple high schools, multiple park facilities, and of course, Heartland here to host any sport one would care to participate in. The Pony Baseball League has shown that private sports facilities can work if the sport participants truly want them. And with State Farm, country companies, ISU, and Wesleyan, among others, there's no shortage of business acumen available to make a private undertaking successful if such a facility were actually needed in the community. Bloomington Center for the Perspiring Arts is nice, but it has not made us a mecca of arts as promised. The Coliseum was also touted as an economic godsend, but it continually bleeds money and has been rife with corruption on top of that. Normal was long a pillar of economic responsibility, but is now tens of millions of dollars in debt. I definitely see the appeal of this undertaking. It's exciting and sexy and provides plenty of photo ops for those who promote it. But I urge both councils not to double down locally on the same tax and spend and borrow and spend more policies that have left the state of Illinois both a laughing stock and the nation's largest source of people moving away. Bloomington Normal needs government that will focus on our biggest asset, the quality of our people, and not on creating tax burdens and excessive regulations, as the state of Illinois has, that encourage those best people to move elsewhere. Please keep this in mind and take off your rose-colored glasses before we see the presentation.
Presentation from Sports Facilities Advisory Group on the study. I only saw one person ask. Okay. We'll receive a report from the Sports Facilities Advisory Group in terms of the market study that they have completed. At the end of that, we'll take questions from Bloomington Council, the Normal Council, and CBB Board.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for your time. I'm Evan Elef. I am the COO of Sports Facilities Advisory, one of the owners of Sports Facilities Advisory and Sports Facilities Management. I'll tell you what that means in just one moment. Quick housekeeping note. There's a little bit of color saturation on some of these slides. The conversion didn't work exactly the way that we wanted, so I'll do my best to point out those areas. Also, to make sure that I'm going at a quick enough pace, there's a lot of information to cover, certainly a big study, a big undertaking, and a lot of data that we've provided for you. So I'm going to go at a pretty quick clip and certainly reserve some time here. Know that your time is valuable, and thank you again very much. In terms of what I'm going to cover over the next 30 to 45 minutes, just depending on the pace, one, give you a reminder of the project that we were engaged for; two, tell you who we are and what we do; number three, give you an update on the state of the industry. That's sports tourism, youth sports, activity levels, obesity, why we think sport matters. We're going to get into a little bit of the background data from the local market, including our insights, the regional market, including our insights, what facility we're recommending and why, how big it is, how much it will cost to build, in today's opinion of cost. Give you a high-level overview of the financial performance and the economic impact. All of that is in detail in, for council members, the pro forma document that you have in front of you. I'll point out there is one slight change to that document made after print, so I will point that out as we go through. And finally, we'll wrap up with a conclusion, just some ending thoughts from me before we turn it over to you for questions. So very quickly, in terms of the project that we were engaged for, I was here along with one of my colleagues in April, and we started this process in-market. What we've been engaged to do is look at a multi-sport complex here in the Bloomington-Normal area. So our engagement is a combination of the city, the town, and the CBB, and really looking at how we can fill local needs for sports and recreation, as well as regional opportunities through sports and recreation. So that process took us through a five steps, a five-step study, market analysis and data review, all the way through today's final presentation, inclusive of the document that you have in front of you, and that document will be updated along with a copy of this presentation and an executive summary report as well. What's in front of you is numbers. That's a pro forma. I'm going to give you the backup, the color, to those numbers as we go through here. One thing that I will note here on step two, not only were we here working with the project team, members of the city, the town, and the CBB, but spent a lot of time in-market talking to various stakeholders, people not only from the sports that we ended up recommending, but also from sports and recreation that we didn't recommend for this project. Just because something didn't land in this project doesn't mean it's not valuable in the city, in the town, to this entire community. We'll talk to you about why we selected what we selected as the recommendations. And really, the driver of those, first and foremost, was the answer to the question, why? Why a new sports and recreation complex here in the area? And so first and foremost, of course, recognizing part of the genesis of this, and it's part, it's not all, but part of the genesis is the seemingly imminent removal of the fields at the airport site and where kids are going to recreate. Now, that's a soccer-specific facility. This is not a soccer-specific study, as you saw and as you'll be reminded a few times, it's a multipurpose sports and recreation study. But through that process, there were four primary definitions of success that many of you in the room helped to shape. Number one, that in order to be successful, if we were to turn the clock back, actually turn the clock forward, 10 years from now and then look back, what would this facility have accomplished? And so at an overarching level, number one, it's got to create economic impact. Now, number one doesn't mean it's the top priority, but that was the first one that was identified. So it's got to be a source for new visitation and new spending in the community. Number two, it's got to help create a regional destination. That's a regional destination in terms of two things, tournament as well as the quality. And the quality of sports and recreation assets is increasingly important to people moving in, whether those are people with families already or people who think they're going to have families in the future. They want to know that the location they're going to is making an investment in sports and recreation. Number three, operational sustainability. This can't be a long-term burden. It's got to have operational sustainability at a focus. Now, that doesn't mean necessarily that a facility has to break even. It means that it's got to be sustainable for the community. There are a lot of questions left to answer, what the funding sources are, what the operational sources are. All of those will be immediate future next steps as you start your discussion, but it's got to be affordable in this community. And number four, it's got to help drive sense of place and quality of life. You can talk about the regional destination, but there's not much more important than serving your locals and creating a regional destination for residents, right? A reason for people to move here, a reason for people to stay here, a reason for kids who grew up here to come back here as adults. Quick overview on who we are and what we do. SFA and SFM, Sports Facilities Advisory, that's who is engaged for the study. Simplifying this slide, we have two scopes of services. We help to plan and fund sports, recreation, wellness, entertainment, and event facilities all over the country and internationally. SFM, Sports Facilities Management, we develop and we manage those projects and those processes. Today, we've got 27 facilities either in development or under our management. We work with dozens more. We do this more often than anyone else, and part of the reason is because you can engage us for one of those scopes of services, plan, fund, develop, manage, or all of them. For this project, we are only talking about the planning process. Funding comes immediately next. The concept here has been developed as a publicly-built, publicly-operated facility. Now, public will probably change a little bit, and I'll show you that in a moment, but in terms of our history, we were founded in 2003. We've done this kind of work for more than 1,500, actually, at this point, it's more than 1,600 communities, so this is a little out of date, more than $8 billion worth of planned facilities. Now, not everything that we plan becomes operational. In fact, the vast majority don't, and there are usually good reasons for that. Those definitions of success that were outlined at the front end, they have to be met, and not every project can meet them. In terms of our impact, we, in those facilities that I mentioned, over the last three years alone, we've had more than 50 million visits. We have created hundreds of millions of dollars in new spending in communities that we're working for and working with through sports and recreation. And finally, the thing that's most important for you to understand is our mission. We exist to dramatically improve the health and the economic vitality of communities that we serve. We know sport is a powerful vehicle for that. If something isn't built for doing those things, helping economically, helping socially, helping educationally, and doing it at an affordable rate where kids can afford to play and families can afford to play, we don't really want to be part of it. I will touch base on this last bullet under the second line there, public-private partnerships. If you were in our office five years ago, you would have heard the phone ring, you would have seen emails come in, you would have heard conversations, and you would have seen a relatively small portion of our portfolio was represented by public-private partnerships. Today, about 80% of our projects have some level of public-private partnership. On the public side, it's expensive to operate publicly. It's expensive to build in some cases, particularly in states like Illinois. On the private side, it's difficult to get a return on investment if you do it alone and you have those objectives of serving the community, because you just simply can't generate enough revenue to cover some of the current expenses for construction. And so through that process, the shift that we've seen over the last five years in particular is a major uptick in public-private partnerships. Knowing this community like we do, not nearly as well as you, the experts who live here and work here and are responsible for the people here, but we do understand that there are a lot of private people, there have been some private concepts, certainly some private facilities that have been successful, and some major employers in this area, we would encourage that as part of the next step. Look for those public-public and public-private partnerships. I mentioned that the vast majority of projects don't get funded. In fact, the vast majority of projects don't even come through our filter. If you sat in our office today, we have about 40 inbound requests for calls, or for service, rather, on a weekly basis. We only end up serving about 5% of those. Depending on the quarter, it's 3% to 5%. And once we have weeded out 95% of those projects and served the other 5%, even still, they're not all going forward as feasible projects. Even if something's feasible, it doesn't necessarily go forward. But 30% of the projects that we work on, we call feasibility no. And that's because you've got a definition of success and you've got a market opportunity, and those things can't mesh. That happens because you don't have enough money to build the right complex, because you don't have enough money to operate it, because the market isn't primed to achieve, whether it's your operational goals, your economic goals, it's just not going to work in the way that you need it to, and we don't recommend moving forward. 20% of our projects come back as feasibility yes, which means it moves forward, it meshes the definitions of success, and the reasons that you want to do it mesh with the opportunity in the market. But where we do our best work is in the 50% in between. We call that feasibility yes if. It's where you have to get creative, creative on what you build, why you build it, what your funding sources are, how you operate it, what those public-private or public-public-public partnerships, excuse me, become. Last thing on our company that I want to share with you is, I meant it when I said that we exist to improve communities. One of the things we're really proud of right now is Project Play 2020. It's, it's, excuse me, it's part of the Aspen Institute Project Play, and it is an initiative with 20 organizations. You recognize literally all of those logos up there. Now, you recognize ours after today. We were working with some of the biggest names, biggest companies, and biggest organizations in the industry and outside of the industry to deliver what good looks like in sport through multiple communities. So we are looking at how to train coaches, at how to decrease costs, at how to build for local leagues, and make sure that locals are supported through sport. It's a major initiative, and it's representative of one of our biggest initiatives as a company, and that is collaboration. We don't do anything solely alone. It's not just me and my team in our office. We've got our network of people, managers out in the field, people who build facilities like this, people who operate facilities like this that aren't us, and a lot of different organizations that we work with to improve communities. Give you a quick overview of trends in sports. So this is the first one that you may already be aware of, particularly if you're sitting in a seat as staff or as an elected official, sports tourism. Over the last five years, we've seen a rampant increase in sports tourism, and the reason is that people are traveling more and spending more. If you look at 2013, which is on the left here, as baseline zero, over the next three years and continuing four years and now into the fifth year, we've seen more and more games being played and more and more and more money being spent on travel sports. At the same time, one of the things that we're very alarmed at are these numbers below the line. In blue, those are the numbers of players. Overall, although more games are being played, more tournaments are being held, and more money is being spent, fewer kids are participating in sports at an active level, and an active level is a healthy level. To demonstrate some of the reasons why, one of the big issues is cost disparity, right? We have an income gap, and what we see is that the haves and the have-nots economically are changing who is able to participate. It's expensive to play. Kids are required to play more in order to be competitive. They're required to travel more. The average family spends over $900 per weekend when they have to go out of town for sports tourism events. And what we see is that kids from lower economic levels simply are being outpriced. And so if you look at that bottom line, I think lacrosse is a really telling example, right? If you look at lacrosse participation, and I apologize, this is one of those slides that got a little blurry, but this big orange line, these are kids from households earning more than $100,000. 56% of competitive lacrosse players come from those households. 4% come from households under $25,000. Technically, in this country, that's not even the poverty line, although we could talk about that. But the point is that if you have nothing but private, competitive, for-profit organizations running these types of sports, kids get left behind, and it's a serious issue for us. When you look at kids in terms of their participation, the top blue line is number of kids who are playing a team sport at least once a year. That number has been steady and stable for a long time. But playing once a year and playing at a level to be active and healthy are two different things. And during that same period of time, from 2011 to 2016, we've seen a precipitous drop in this red line. Those are the kids playing a team sport often enough to maintain a healthy lifestyle because of sport. To dive into that a little bit more, 2011, 28.7% of kids in this country played a sport enough to be active and be considered healthy. That means that they play at least three hours per week, three different times per week, so total of three hours, but it has to be spread across multiple days, at a level where they are in a high-calorie burning activity. And five years later, that number from 28.7 dropped to 24.8. And as you can imagine, the impact of that is that we are winning the race that we cannot afford to win. This is overweight and obese kids in our country. And against these 15 peer countries, we have the top line in both, right? Almost 40% of our girls aged 6 to 12 are overweight. Almost 35%, actually 35% of our boys are overweight. And this is, it's actually a direct tie-in to an unintended consequence from the defunding of school sports that came along with No Child Left Behind, as dollars were given to schools for STEM activities, which is a great thing. They were taken away for activities, and the gap hasn't been filled on the public side or on the private side across the country enough to continue to deliver low-cost or no-cost sports. And so kids have been dropping out of sports, and at the same time, they've been increasing in their weight. So finally, before we get to the study, the last point that I want to make is the impact of sport. This slide shows the impact of activity. This is again, at least three hours per week, spread across at least three different times per week, what happens to kids who are active versus kids who are inactive. The first and foremost, and I think probably the most sensible one, is that kids who are active at least three times per week, at least three hours total per week, are 1/10 as likely as their inactive counterparts to develop childhood obesity. But the impacts compound from there. Those kids go on to have better test scores. As teenagers, they have a lower prevalence of risk behaviors related to sex, drugs, and alcohol. They are more likely to graduate from high school. Those kids that graduate from high school have more opportunity to go on to college. And then those kids, as they become adults, believe it or not, the active kids versus their inactive counterparts earn 7% to 8% more as adults. Compound that with the fact that they're healthier and they have lower healthcare costs. It makes a big financial difference. But then the other piece here is really important, is that kids who grow up active are about six times more likely than inactive kids to be active adults. So you get them active early, they're going to become active adults by the numbers, and active adults are twice as likely to have active kids themselves. So what that means is that creating opportunities, maintaining opportunities, and making sure that your kids are active means that you create a multigenerational and intergenerational cycle of community health and all of the compounding benefits related to social, educational, physical, financial benefits as well. So that's why we exist. It's why we do what we do. It's why this is important to us when we hear that a community is going to lose one of its major sports assets and that the replacement plan for that is unclear and that something needs to be done. We want to make sure that something gets done, regardless of whether it's our plan, your plan, or something in between, or someone else's plan, all of that's fine. What we really want to make sure is that kids have the opportunity to participate. Excuse me, participate. So now let's get into the study. First, I'm going to take you through just some high-level insights related to the market. So what this slide shows is multiple sites. We actually looked at 16 different sites. These are all the 30-minute drive time population highlights, so the demographics, socioeconomic highlights. What you'll see here, and I won't go into any numbers, is that there's not a lot of variation between these sites. Within 30 minutes, you're generally within about 10% of any of these categories, serving the same population. Now, that is different if you look at a single site and start going out into your drive-time radii. So at 10 minutes, 15 minutes, 30 minutes from a single site, you may be serving a very different population base. We chose this one because, look at the differentiation, right? This is one of the sites, and you see that, we'll just take household income, within 10 minutes, the median household income is $107,000. Go out five minutes away from that, and the population changes so significantly that 107,000 becomes 77,000. Go out to 30 minutes, it becomes that average that you saw on the last slide, 61,000. So we'll provide some insights on that, although it is worth noting that that is, sorry, it is still significantly higher than when you get beyond this area. There are a lot of benefits of this area in terms of the demographics and the socioeconomics, just in terms of thinking about facility financibility or sustainability, and ultimately being able to charge rates. We look at local market access. There's not enough to see based on these colors. I promise the charts are actually a little bit better on my computer. But these are the 30-minute drive times. What this shows us on the left is population density. You don't see a lot of color there, because there's not a lot of color there. You're pretty uniform across your 10, 15, and 30 minute, which is what these numbers are, or these squiggly lines are, in terms of your population density. But you do have a significantly different set of median household income numbers. So you've got some pockets of higher area. You certainly have within 30 minutes, some areas just to the west, east, and northeast, and then all the way to the south, we've got lower household income. We look at all of those factors and make recommendations about sites. The reason we're showing you multiple sites instead of a site is because no site's been selected, right? We know that a site will have to be selected in the future, but to provide you with some insights, I'll do that in a moment, we've got some recommendations there. The final piece, and again, I won't go into the numbers, but this is a sampling of sports and sports participation. The reason that this is up here is because I want you to understand that we cast a really wide net. We have a relatively limited scope in terms of our recommendation compared to what we looked at. We looked at ice, and we looked at swimming, and we looked at tennis, and we looked at baseball, and we looked at softball, and we looked at soccer, and we looked at football, and we looked at bup, 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 all the way down the line. We looked at everything. We came back to the definitions of success. We looked at your current climate. We looked at the loss of fields. We looked at opportunities. We looked at a lot of different things to come back with our recommendation, but we did our very best to leave no stone unturned on the front end. So with that, we also wanted to look where people were recreating. Again, this is just a sample, but what are your current facilities, and what are those facilities that people may be leaving a little bit to go to and participate? So we looked across a lot of different local facilities. I know you can't read that. There was no intent for you to read that. It's just to say that this, as a small sampling of dozens and dozens and dozens of facilities that your locals could participate at, were looked at. So I'm going to wrap up local market with some local market insights. Number one, from a site-based perspective, there are a large number of sites that could host a complex, right? We have a lot of space that is required by outdoor fields in particular, and there are a lot of sites that are big enough in this market that could support that. Now, the benefit of those sites across your local population, across your city and your town, you know, each one of them has their pluses and their minuses, but as I showed you before, the 30-minute drive time, not a lot of variation, but the sub-30-minute drive times certainly can be a lot of variation. So we know that when you select your site, site location will matter in terms of some of the funding that you may be able to get and in terms of the service that you may be able to provide. When we look at the market-based insights, some of the keys that we take away from this market, it's highly participative, right? And that's to be expected. We're in the Midwest. Lots of people play sports throughout the state, throughout the Midwest. That wasn't a surprise to us. Strong local income, particularly compared to some of the other areas. We showed you that even though that goes from 107 to 72 to 61, outside of 30 minutes, it dropped down to 53. There are a lot of benefits to this community, as I mentioned before. In terms of the greatest need that we saw, that we noticed through the data and through conversations with a lot of stakeholders, is indoor turf space. Right now, for indoor turf activities, particularly during the winter, people are primarily going away. They're going to Peoria and others, and they are having to travel out of market. And that means that a lot of kids aren't able to continue their sport or continue their activity throughout the winter months. If you lose those soccer fields, or potentially when you lose those soccer fields, that's going to become a significant need, because you will have taken away your best soccer asset and not replace that, which means that those other fields in the community, many of which are currently multipurpose, they're going to have an influx of soccer players. Soccer players will left behind. Lacrosse players will be left behind. Rugby players, ultimate players, all of those sports that happen on multipurpose fields, they're going to be jostling for position until you can replace those fields. And finally, the other piece that we needed to recognize here was that for use of fields currently, because fields were starting to come forward as a real high need here, the rates that are being charged currently are well under market value, and we need to be aware of that, both in terms of understanding what the realistic opportunity is and what the best practices would be for ensuring that something doesn't become a long-term taxpayer dollars, because it's not all supported by taxpayer dollar for non-users, but also starts to stair-step and implement a fee structure that gets you progressively closer to and then at what is fair market value. Finally, facility-based insights, based on everything that we saw, indoor, outdoor, field complex started to rise to the top for your locals. Additionally, that a tournament-capable facility really needed to be looked at in order to meet the definitions of success. And finally, it can't be about soccer or a single sport. It's got to be about something that increases the diversity and the versatility of that. It's got to drive density. It's got to serve a lot of people. So we wanted to make sure that this was clear. Multipurpose is absolutely key, not just looking at a single sport. Regional market overview. Regional market overview, some of the same information. I'm going to go a little bit quicker here to pick up the pace, but number one, we look at the regional drive-in market as four hours. So we break down a lot of different drive-times, but within two-hundred-and-forty minutes, you have over twenty-five million people that can be serviced by a tournament-capable regional draw sports complex. We looked at the same sports participation, it's one of sixty-eight factors, or it's sum of sixty-eight factors that we include in our analysis. Then we looked at where people are playing, regional events that are currently taking place. We analyzed more than six-hundred-and-seventy-five different regional events that happen on an annual basis. That's not just soccer and lacrosse, it's also BMX, and we looked at swim competitions and ice hockey tournaments and figure skating. We looked at everything that we could look at. More than six-hundred-and-seventy-five different events that we analyzed, and we broke down where are they happening, when are they happening, how are they being delivered? As well as the facilities that those are happening in. So two-hundred-and-fifty different quote-unquote "tournament-capable" facilities. Now, not every facility is built the same, operated the same, managed the same, delivered the same, right? So just because you have the capacity to host tournaments doesn't mean you are a premier experience, but we did look at all of those facilities that can and do host tournaments to understand what your best option for competition would be and what some of those key competitive value propositions would be. So, thinking about those value propositions, number one, Central Illinois, right? You've got a good location and great accessibility to the entire state. You're already seeing a lot of state games from, from some of your organizations, your Special Olympics, Paralympics organizations, we spoke with them. We understand that centrality, accessibility have been a key factor in getting some things here already. Number two, that the sixty-minute and two-hundred-and-forty-minute regional drive-time, again, it's got a minimal difference in terms of what those individual sites might bring, because most of those people that are coming from away, they're plugging into their GPS, so ten minutes from one direction or ten minutes in the other typically won't make a huge difference. And then number two, or sorry, number three, I mentioned before that site location for local would matter for both funding and service. If we think about the regional drive-in population, it's going to matter for funding, and it's going to matter for some of your other factors, but service will be less important in terms of the precise location, and part of that is because of the community that you've built here and the access to other supporting, supporting service providers, which I'll talk about in a moment. Market-based insights, highly participative, as I mentioned before, large regional at more than twenty-five million people. On a sub-regional basis, there's reason to expect that some, some of your indoor turf facilities can be successful. From a regional basis, you have a lot of sports tourism destinations that have been successful in what their own definitions of success are. Not all of them, actually many of them are not reaching financial sustainability, but many of them are reaching their definitions of success across a lot of different sports. And then the final piece is, this community, relative to other markets of this size, does have a high number of supporting service providers, hotel rooms and your occupancy throughout the year, as well as restaurants. And so, we look at those as some of the key factors in addition to retail and other entertainment options, but this market can support people coming in. You've got some capacity throughout the year, you've got certainly a lot of properties and a lot of options, a lot of different price points. We see that as a real benefit, that a lot of markets that are sort of this size, and also that are a little bit isolated from major population bases, a lot of them simply don't have that, and they'd have to wait for hotels to come in and restaurants to come in to support tournaments and events. You're, you've got a pretty good starting point here. So finally, in terms of facility-based insights, you have to invest in the size and the quality of this facility in order to compete. What's happening right now in sports tourism is that a lot of communities already have and are planning to invest. If you go up to Rockford, if you look anywhere in Chicago, if you look at Indianapolis and all sorts of others, there's major investment into this. You can't expect to put a parking lot in with some grass fields and just stripe them for a tournament and expect to compete in the long term. That's not going to be an option. You have to invest if you want it to meet that portion of the definition of success. And number two, synthetic turf fields. So, you know that it's going to have outdoor fields, they're going to need to be primarily synthetic turf, and the reason for that is that as you bring in events, they want to be in one place where they can host the vast majority of their teams in one location, and they want to be secure that if they come and it rains, you're not going to cancel the tournament on them. And synthetic turf is key for that. So, that gets us into our recommended facility. I'm not going to go through these numbers, but we have an indoor complex and an outdoor complex, and we think the balance there is really important in terms of service to this community, as well as in terms of financial performance. So, on the indoor side, we have looked at a couple of different models. What we're talking about today and the numbers that are in front of you are for a dome. The dome adds a lot of flexibility in terms of the size of the field that you can put in there, the height of the roof that's effective to build. It costs an awful lot less to build on the front end, and there are a lot of domes that are operational here in the Midwest with a lot of success. In fact, Bo Jackson's Elite Sports in Lockport, if you're familiar with it, we, that business model, we actually are partial owners of. We know exactly how the domes work here and what the keys to success are, so we integrated that into this analysis. On the outdoor side, mostly synthetic turf. I will talk about this, actually, I'll just go to the summary slide, it'll be a little bit easier for you to see, but this summary, and I promise on my computer, summary was on the same line. So, again, a little formatting issue bothers me, hopefully it doesn't bother you too much. But, in general, outdoor complex, sixteen fields, twelve of those lighted, twelve synthetic turf, four natural grass. You want natural grass for some of your activities, but we also have that natural grass field serving as a full-size cricket field. So there are a number of cricket pitches in the northeast, there are not a lot of cricket fields, full-size cricket fields, and one of the things that we found through our data collection and through our interviews was that you have a pretty significant cricket population here, primarily going up to Chicago on a regular basis. We'd like to bring some of those Chicago people down here with this asset. And so cricket, we think, is unique to you. We don't, we don't recommend cricket in many communities, but we do think it's a big opportunity here. As well as the dome, it's a hundred-and-thirty thousand square feet. That's because it's really effective to build at that size. It gives you an oversized field, it can be cross-lined with five multipurpose fields, and then another key difference-maker for you, you can run two full youth baseball or softball fields at two-hundred-and-twenty-five feet in this facility. So we looked for the most dynamic, most flexible, most usable, most useful facility for you. In terms of cost of development, as we have gone through this and looked at some key assumptions, keep in mind that, for example, we don't have a site, so we don't know what the cost of land might be. We've put in a placeholder based on some averages, but one of the key factors we recommend is let this be an anchor, go pay less for land, and let the value of the land that surrounds be developable and become increased in terms of its total value, which happens in pretty much all of these instances. But, land costs, we've got at about three million dollars. Hard cost, that's where a lot of your, not only your, your foundation work, but your paving, your grading, you have a, you know, a pretty undulating territory here, you'll have to do a good bit of site work that we've estimated, although again, it's not site-specific. Field and sport equipment costs, lots of synthetic turf, lights, top-quality type assets, so that's included in there. And then your FFNE, furniture fixtures and equipment, the soft cost of construction, design, architect, engineering, construction management, and then soft cost of operations. So that soft cost of operations is really important. You can't build it, cut the ribbon, and expect it to be functioning. You have to pre-book it, pre-market it, hire the staff in advance. You have a lot of operational startup costs that come from just preparing the business and training the staff and getting the word out there and pre-selling the business and making sure that when you do cut that ribbon, it's not assuming that people will come, it's that you already know that they're coming, and so that's all wrapped up into that. Any of these numbers that we're now getting into, complete detail in that pro forma, so it is really in-depth and detailed. It converts actually into a first-year operating budget, so every line that you can expect to be in your P and L is backed up here. All of this is summarized and then the complete backup behind it, or in that case, in front of it. Financial performance overview, I'm going to be high-level, because I don't want to drown you in detail, so this is what your set of programs looks like, and this is how each of those programs generates revenue in the first year and then grows up to year five. Not going to go into depth on any of these individually, but that was also spread apart, but these are your top revenue category, revenue generators by category. Important to recognize here, number one and number two, food and beverage and outdoor tournament rentals. Those come in as number one and number two, because right now, you're not charging a fair market value for your local field use, and we know that you're going to have to stair-step up into more. Now, this is actually at year five, so this is at full maturity, and we're still capitalizing more on outside dollars to come in than we are relying on locals. So your number-one sources of revenue, and food and beverage is primarily driven by tournaments, is food and beverage sales, and then number two is tournament rentals. Number three happened through the new facilities here and the fact that we believe strongly that that indoor dome component can be the revenue center that helps to offset the cost of delivering fields. And make no mistake, in almost every case across the country, fields cost money. If you can build a dome, you can do it effectively, and you can have this differentiated asset that we're talking about, you can then also charge more, you can manage it more effectively, you can bring in outsiders that are coming on a Tuesday night, just not, not just on a Saturday afternoon, and so you can generate, your next three, four, and five revenue streams come from those new indoor programs. It's not until we get to line item six that your outdoor field rental comes up, and then you see youth development, secondary revenue, and other piling in there. So, prioritizing dollars from outside, then new activities and programs, then the replacement of your fields into this new complex. Each one of those revenue lines has its own operating expenses, what we call the cost of goods sold. Those are the direct and variable expenses associated with servicing that revenue. Complete detail on every single one of these in that full pro forma. And of course, we've got the operating expenses that are your overhead, or as we call them, operating expenses. That's your full-time staff, that's your facilities cost, that's your cost of operating the business, the things that you're going to pay no matter what, whether you've got a hundred teams or ten teams there, you're going to have those fixed costs. So those are included. And what that gets us to is EBITDA, earnings before interest, tax, depreciation, and amortization. And that is just simply, that's your operating cash flow. So if you take your revenues minus your cost of goods sold, minus your overhead expenses and you look, it's going to require an early-year subsidy, and until it gets to maturity, it's going to require a decreasing but ongoing subsidy. We've done a twenty-year outlook, and that twenty-year outlook, this converts from essentially break-even to actually a positive number by year six. That's the maturation process. But, we take a conservative approach. If you look at facilities that we've actually planned, funded, opened, and managed, we're typically hitting year four or year five in year one, two, or three. And so we have a history of being conservative on this end, because we want you to plan to have enough money to help sustain it through early-year maturation and until it gets to the point where it's self-sustaining. If you look at cost recovery as a percent, this is just what percent of your costs you're covering through revenue generation, years one through five, seventy-two percent up to ninety-nine point something that rounds up to a hundred percent by year five. So, spending inside the facility, inside the fence, right, on the fields and in the dome, that's one thing, but we're also looking at a tournament option, and so we look at the economic impact. These are dollars that are spent in this community that wouldn't be here but for a tournament or event that's coming in. So we categorize non-locals as anyone coming from more than ninety minutes away, and when they spend, they create economic impact. So that is, again, new spending. The first thing that we do to understand that is we project the number of events that can be run between all of your events, soccer, lacrosse, rugby, everything else. We again have taken a conservative approach, eight events, up to fifteen events by year five, and you can see the backup on those events in terms of size, number of teams, how they grow, how they change throughout. There's a backup P and L for that. That converts into economic impact drivers, as we call them, the number of non-local days in the market and the number of hotel rooms generated. So a non-local day in market, if I come in and I have a family of four, my son's playing soccer, my daughter comes with me, and it's me and my wife, that's four people. And if we spend three days in the market, that is twelve non-local days in the market. Each one of the three of us, each one of the four of us over three days. So, that converts into a lot more room, a lot more days than nights, because first, we spend more days than nights. Second, four of us spend the night in the same hotel room, so that's why that number is so much lower. But what we also do is we look at how much people will spend each day that they come into market, and we break it down based on your average daily rates, on your average daily expenditures, and on literally hundreds of other tournaments that we run, or we have conducted the surveys for, or we have analyzed the surveys for, to then create a local spend for you. This is specific to you, based on your hotels, restaurants, retail, entertainment, et cetera. And we get to about ninety dollars, ninety-one dollars per person per day when non-locals come in. So ninety minutes away, you come in, you spend ninety-one dollars per day. If you do the math on that, those number of non-local days times that ninety dollars and sixty-six cents gives you your economic impact. This is new spending and direct spending only, three-point-one million dollars, but as those eight tournaments grow to fifteen tournaments, and as the number of teams in those tournaments grows annually, as the tournament matures, you get larger tournaments and more tournaments. So by the time you hit fifteen tournaments in year five, it's almost, sorry, it is nine-and-a-half million dollars in this community that once again would not be here but for those fifteen tournaments. And all of this is based on real-world operations, facilities that we manage, and regional facilities, looking at all the competition and taking a conservative approach to how you compete. The other thing, sorry, the other thing I want to mention to you, you see that there's a big number, and then you see there's a really little number. That zero there, we don't project unless you ask us to indirect spending. Indirect spending is basically the recycling of dollars. So if I come in from Florida and I spend my ninety dollars per person, some of those ninety dollars then get recirculated in the community and recycled in the community. That's called indirect or induced spending, and we don't really like it, it's kind of fluffy for us. So we are only focused on new spending that we consider direct spending, not the recycling of those dollars, so that's why it's a zero. Final thing is, if you generate all of that revenue, yes, it's new money into your hotels and your restaurants, et cetera. It's also new tax revenue dollars, and this is the one difference between the packet in your hand and what's on this presentation. We reallocated some of those, we learned a little bit more about it, it happened after printing and before this presentation, so these numbers are updated, and we've also sort of refigured them in terms of how we show it, and I'll show you that in a minute. But, the city and the town, now, where the site is will impact who gets a bigger split of this, and when you've got large tournaments, everybody's going to be filled up, right? And all of your retail, and all of your restaurants, and all of your hotels will be benefiting, but realistically, there will be some ebb and flow between the city and the town. Now luckily, your dollars in terms of taxes are the same, so if a dollar gets spent in Normal and a dollar gets spent in Bloomington, your respective communities benefit the same in terms of tax. The county gets a really small chunk, it's a quarter of a percent of your taxes, so that's not a lot of money, but what is a lot of money is the state level. So a hundred-and-nineteen dollars up to three-hundred-and-sixty dollars, or three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars, the state is generating just a little bit more than the local. And the reason that the local is that high is because although your sales tax is a little bit lower, you're generating more hotel tax and then your food tax for all the spending on, on restaurant and prepared foods here. So, in conclusion, just wrapping up and recovering what we've talked about, number one, financial impact. If you look at this as a community, and for the time being, I'm just going to take off the city and the town, and I'm just going to say a community, the greater Bloomington-Normal area, and you look at this facility in terms of its financial performance, and then you look at the EBITDA number, which we showed you, which is still slightly negative, and you apply just the new tax revenue only to the town and the city, it surpasses the subsidy required by year three. You have put in dollars into the operation, two-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars, but those taxes that you generated equaled two-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand dollars. So by year three, it's recovering more than what it costs to operate in new taxes for you, and then by year five, it's up in the three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar range. Again, conservative approach, spreading this out over five years rather than modeling a two- or a three-year maturation period, and again, also, we typically beat the numbers when we operate facilities. But, that's the approach that we take. And, in addition to those dollars that are brought in, of course, part of those dollars is the fact that your hotels and your restaurants, your local business owners and shops, they benefited from this. Three-point-one, three-point-two million dollars, up to nine-and-a-half million dollars spent, once again, that would not be here but for those events. Community impact, that was the financial impact, but I said before that kids who are active in sport have all of these benefits, health, education, social, performance, all of this intergenerational, multi-generational cycle that I talked about. It's really important, because this gets applied here if you expand your sports, and part of it goes away if you lose fields and don't have a replacement plan that's viable and allows kids and families to participate. And then the final thing that we always want to talk about is, we asked why on the front end, now we have to ask if it can meet those definitions of success on the back end. So number one, can it create a significant driver of economic impact? When we look at nine-and-a-half new million dollars spent in a market, we would consider that a significant new economic impact. Number two, become a regional tournament destination. If you built a collection of fields in a parking lot and striped it, as I said before, you're not a regional destination, but if you do a twelve synthetic lighted field complex with four natural grass fields, cricket pitch, the supporting amenities, and then you've got those indoor spaces to service those people and to bring those people and to bring in some of those winter events to your dome, that also gets a checkmark. Number three, achieving operational sustainability, spent a good bit of time on that, so that's a checkmark. And number four, driving a sense of place and quality of life in the community. When we look at communities who are undergoing changes to where the kids can recreate, and you replace existing assets with the same level of asset, we would typically call that a one-to-one replacement, right? And not necessarily improving, but maintaining. But in this complex, if this project can go forward and find a path towards funding, whether it's a phased approach or whether it's an all-in-one-shot approach, if these assets are built, we absolutely believe that this can drive that sense of place and quality of life, help to keep people here, help to attract them here, and help to get kids who grew up here wanting to come back here because of their experiences. So that's a lot of information, as I said. We'll turn it over for questions. I'm going to drop this with you.
Thank you. Anyone want to start with questions? Mayor Renner.
Yeah, thank you so much for your very thorough presentation. I very much appreciate it, and I know there's a lot of documentation here that we can take a look at. One, obviously, silver dollar question would be, as you're making your projections up to year five, and in the past, you said you generally have, in Lockport and other places, excuse me, you have exceeded those expectations. What is the, is there a likelihood that we will cannibalize each other as more and more communities begin to have, to be destinations? And how do we control for that?
That's a great question. Good on this one. Okay. Great question, and actually, it's something that we are really worried about across a lot of parts of the country. If you were to go to the southeast and look for another indoor court-based facility, and trust me, we're engaged to review a lot of them, they are getting less and less and less projected successful, right? Because there's cannibalization, there's oversaturation. Ultimately, if supply outpaces demand, everyone loses. So it's one of the key pieces that we look at in terms of creating a differentiated asset. You can't build something that entices your neighbors to go out and compete with you. You have to build something that is founded enough and spectacular enough that it creates a barrier to entry. The second piece is, we don't ever look at anything as being simply used for tournaments and events, right? We started with the local programming, we looked at the local programming, and we wanted to make sure that you are serving your locals through this facility, that you're not grossly overbuilding for them. This is not a 60-field recommendation, this is a 16-field recommendation, and part of that is because we think that's what's responsible. I'll be the first to tell you that sports tourism is completely different today than it was 10 years in the past. There's no reason that five years and 10 years from now, we should expect it to be the same as it is today. So we know it's dynamic, but what won't be dynamic is a growing population that needs sports for its local kids, and that's a primary driver of what this recommendation is.
Related to Mayor Renner's, Mayor Renner's question, obviously, or I'm going to assume that we're not the only community in the Midwest that is considering a new facility like this. In your estimation, what kind of timeframe are we looking at for this to remain viable?
Well, remaining viable is one question. Timeframe, in reality, of building it is a second. Obviously, the big accordion of whether or not it can remain viable comes down to funding, right? Sometimes we get funding in four months, and sometimes we get funding in four years, and sometimes we get funding in never, right? So I'll put it this way, given what we know, which we're pretty tied into this market, we think that the window here, in terms of what the shelf life of this study would be, we would think in about 18 months. And to the same, to the same question, I'll say this, we know a lot of facilities that are being talked about, we know a lot of communities that are considering them. We don't pretend to know literally every one of them, but we are aware, we're made pretty well aware, and our process allows us to project sort of a success rate of those. So if we have 10 of those that we know about, not all 10 of them will be built, but factored into our competition are what we think will be future developments that will be competitors.
I appreciated your point in response to Mayor Renner's question regarding this being focused on the local community as much as the non-local community. At the beginning of your remarks, you spoke in very compelling ways about the different differentials of income, of household income. And it seemed to me that a lot of your high-level numbers have to do with rentals and that sort of thing. Could you talk a little bit about your calculations that would make this accessible to everybody in our community regardless of their income levels, the way that I think our municipal parks and rec tend to look at that?
Yeah, great question. This is the best number I can give you for that. We took for the value of your field rentals, as I said, it's a stair-stepped approach to creating a fair market value. Now, fair market value, most communities surrounding you are charging more than $50 per hour for a field rate. You've got some of your fields being delivered at $0 or $3 an hour, right? So we've taken a stair-stepped approach, but in doing that, the only thing that we've projected are the full-pay uses of those fields, and we've been pretty conservative. So by year five, if you look at the amount of, the amount of time that those fields are being used in terms of their total utilization against the peak times, which for the outdoor complex, we have 43 hours per week, including weekends and weeknights not past nine o'clock, 43 hours. Of those 43 hours per week, the maximum that we get to from those full pay is 25% of those hours, which means you've got 75% of your capacity ultimately to do as you choose. Our recommendation oftentimes in these types of facilities is to create a stair-stepped pricing structure where your local programs, your nonprofit programs, your low-cost, no-cost programs, they get a credit, a waiver, or a reduced fee against that total time. So there's plenty of inventory within this model, and that's one of the reasons that we built the 12 fields, so that some of your local programs, particularly your local recreation programs, shorter seasons, sport sampling, volunteer coaching that are trained, right? Those types of things that can come in and be those factors. You've got plenty of time to help to reduce those costs or create a different structure as you go forward. But we wanted to make sure that we had that capacity, so we weren't leaving kids behind by only building enough for the kids that can afford to play, excuse me, afford to pay.
Thank you. So if you could go back to the slide where you were showing how SFA, the different types of venues that you guys recommend, whether it be a no, a yes entirely, or a yes with some modifications?
Yes.
Thank you. So looking at that 70% or so where it says yes, and then yes if, I'm going to combine those into one category, can you walk me through how other communities have funded these types of projects, whether it be hotel motel tax, bonding, TIFs? What have you seen in your experience?
All of the above. So the transition that we've had, it used to be, you know, GO bond-heavy, right? And at this point, that's not enough. Now, what we really see is diversification in terms of funding and diversification across public and private. So let me give you the example of, I wish I had loaded this slide up, but Spokane Sportsplex. And I'm going to do this narratively a little bit because I think it represents a good, a good case study. Spokane Sportsplex is a $42 million project in Spokane, Washington, that when we did the study, it came back as operationally feasible for their definitions of success. They had no path forward to financing. What they had was about 36% of that $42 million that could be made available between the Public Facilities District, the PFD, which is ultimately the, will be the owner and manager of the facility, and the city. Now, they had talked to the county, county wasn't on board. They had talked to the state, state wasn't on board, and they had talked to a couple of other groups, and really, there wasn't much momentum. But it's this slide that really starts to build out what this is, right? The city was looking for access, and they were looking for new tax revenue, and the PFD was looking for new operating revenue, but they weren't talking about health, they weren't talking about safety, they weren't talking about this, that, and the other. And so as they went through, they ultimately diversified into five sources of funds, including the state gave two or $4 million, the number escapes me. But the county, that wasn't on board at all, the county was looking for its own projects because it thought that the benefit primarily would be within the city limits and not to the county. The county came in and backstopped guaranteed the last $25 million of that project, and now that project is going to be built. And so the number-one way that these are getting, that people are deciding to finance these are through the impacts, right? And really talking about the compounding benefits. Now, to that point, one of the more recent funding streams that we've seen a lot of success with are new market tax credits. New market tax credits aren't applicable in every area, but there may be some pockets within your community that they are available, and we haven't run the census tract data, we're not down that road. But new market tax credits are available for new job creation, new industry, new lots of things, but one of the heavy use of those credits is for things that improve health, and it's to the disadvantaged areas within a community. So if the census tract that it will serve as its core service sector is shown to be, you know, less able to pay, those are monies that we oftentimes go after. On top of that, TIF districts and community business development districts are huge. Obviously, here in the state of Illinois, you've got separate park funding that in a lot of cases is being used and allocated towards that. And we have had a lot of success in working creatively with communities who are sunsetting certain taxes, or certain debts, rather, and replacing those debts, just carrying them forward in a way that makes sense for the community. So it, that's a long-winded answer, but it's really about not looking for the single source of funds, but looking to diversify into as many areas as possible and tap into, sometimes it's only three or $4 million, that's only 10% of this project, but three or $4 million gets a lot done. And if you can start to catapult those and build those, there are creative, creative ways to get to financing that oftentimes take a little bit longer.
Thank you. I was kind of intrigued by the number of tournaments that you said that you could do per year. It sounded like, what, eight, eight to 15, right?
Eight, up to 15 tournaments.
Up to 15, okay. So I, you know, just wanting you to expand on that a little bit because that seemed like a low number, what, one a month almost, if not less than that? And then, if you could also talk about how, because I see a lot of competition, you know, my, I mean, my, my son is into soccer and everything, so we, we, you know, going to, you know, there's a lot of competition between different cities and venues for, for those kinds of tournaments. So how would the community make itself more attractive to someone living in the Chicago area? Why would they decide to come here in Bloomington when there's lots of tournaments in the Chicago area or St. Louis area, which are kind of the, in the area, the bedrocks of soccer?
Yeah. So I'm just going to repeat the question. For me, there was a little feedback there, so there were two parts to the question. Number one was eight to 15 tournaments. It doesn't seem like a lot of tournaments. Talk to me about that. And number two was, how do you compete, right? How do you actually get those tournaments in? So on the eight to 15, there are a lot of examples of facilities regionally that are doing four and six tournaments per year. Most of those are dedicated to single clubs, and soccer clubs have a limit to the number of tournaments that they can run. Some of the more successful tournament complexes are running, you know, 25 and 32 tournaments. If you look at the breakdown of what 15 weekends, 15 tournament weekends would be within your year, granted, we are where we are, the weather is what it is, and it's uncertain in the, in the spring when we're going to get to play, and then it's a little bit of a dive, you know, a dip in the summer, and then it's primarily in the fall. We just don't have that many tournament weekends if we're also going to serve our locals on the weekends. And so that was a key point to us. We think that if you are looking to maximize both your regional draw and your local service, that it's important to start to think about scheduling and capping those tournaments so that you're not every single weekend kicking your locals off to run tournament and events. So could it, could it equate to more than 15 tournament weekends per year? Absolutely, we believe it can. But we thought that that was, A, the conservative and safe approach in increasingly competitive environment, and B, we think that leaves you with capacity for your locals. Second part of your question is, how do you compete? There are a lot of ways that you compete. You look for your inside advantages, if you will, right? And centrality here is a key thing. When are people from southwest Illinois going to play a Chicago team if they don't play here? Because how long do they have to travel to get to that market, or vice versa? Or when are you going to get Indianapolis, or St. Louis, or Kansas City up here all the way to Chicago? Sometimes that works and sometimes it doesn't, but accessibility and centrality is really key for you. The other thing is that you've got to spend money, right? This thing is going to require early year subsidy, and a big portion of that is marketing dollars. Specifically, if you were to go into your, the overhead expenses, on the operating expenses, those are the costs to run the business. We have a line in there called Tournament Business Development, and that Tournament Business Development would be, you know, typically partnered with the CBB, but in some cases, those are bid fees for major events, and in other cases, those are incentives for people to come in, for organizations to bring their tournament to you. And sometimes that can be as simple as, we're going to provide the hospitality, or we're going to pay for some hotel nights, or we're going to give you a credit back. The facility will still recognize its full $500 per field per day, but we're going to pay $250 per field per day because your tournament is that valuable to our hoteliers and our businesses. So there's some exchange of money within that as well.
Thank you. As I am looking at the 20-year outlook for the total revenue and expenses for those of us with the pro forma.
You have really good eyesight, by the way.
Yeah.
It's meant to be digital. I apologize. It doesn't print that well.
It's taken me about 20 minutes to read it, but I've gotten there. Yeah, it's page 11, for those with the packets. It's showing that there are quite significant figures for capital replacement, both at the 10-year mark and the 20-year mark. And unless I'm, you know, reading this incorrectly, when those capital replacement costs are figured in, it, I'm actually, it looks like the total economic impact, not just the EBITDA, but the total economic impact still at the 10 and 20-year mark falls short of the expenses, including the capital replacement, by about a million or so at year 10 and two and a half at year 20.
Yeah.
Am I, am I reading that right?
Yeah, so how the numbers line up, I'm not exactly certain. Let me explain the difference to you, and then talk about how that sort of breaks down in most communities. The reason that those are in there was that you'll have, you'll have capital replacement, you know, starting in year six, seven, eight, something's going to be breaking, right? So we actually recommend spreading a sinking fund for capital replacement, but the reason that those were specifically requested as we were going through this process was, we wanted, we were asked to demonstrate when you have to replace turf and when you have to replace the dome. And those are the two categories that are in there. So turf replacement at every 10 years and dome replacement at 20 years for the technology dome, that's the $5 million and the $10 million plus some change in each one of those tranches. Now, how that lines up, again, I don't know the numbers, I, we could talk about it offline, but I would remind you that in any endeavor that municipality undergoes where they're going to own a facility, you're going to have capital requests and capital costs. And in reality, the capital costs are going to be a little bit more than that. One of the differences here is that if this community was doing something purely for local recreation, you'd have no revenues to offset that, right? Because you are only charging a few dollars per hour for your fields, you're going to need new fields, and you could make some changes and some decisions on that. So it, it's an investment, not just a one-time investment, but it's a long-term investment into whatever the property and the ownership is, and the goal is to offset some of those expenses. We don't expect this facility to ever pay its own debt, either on the front end or the capital replacement refinancing debt, whatever it may be. But that was meant to show where those major tranches that you wouldn't otherwise normally expect if you were just building a grass field complex.
Further questions? We're only taking questions at this point from council members of the two cities and the CBB board. Any further comments or questions from council members or CBB?
I guess this is more a question for, for us, is where do we go from here with this information? I don't know who that's to.
Well, I, I think what we have to do is we have to analyze the numbers, look at it. Both communities and CBB, I think, need to take a hard look at this and start answering some of the questions. Is this something we want for our community? Can we afford it? Can we not afford it? Do we have partners that can help us with this facility if we decide to move forward with it? So I don't think there's any quick, clear answer here. Significant amount of due diligence, the first question is, I think, do we want to, do we want to take the next step and make, take a look at those things? Get along so well here, I tell you. Further on this, I will say, this video, this is being videoed, and will be on the Town and Normal website by about noon tomorrow, I think, in the next couple of days. and Normal website by about noon tomorrow, I think, in the next couple of days. We'll obviously make that available to City of Bloomington to put on, on your website if you'd like. And this report, the corrected report, will be on our website in a couple of days and I'm sure it'll be on City of Bloomington's website. So, any of that information will, will be available as quickly as we can make it available. And I'm looking for one, yep. I knew there'd be one more.
Thank you. Maybe more of an internal question as well. Will there be an opportunity for more public comment on this and if our speaker wants to speak to that as well in terms of what you've seen in other communities? At this point, what would be a path for dialogue with the community?
You want me to go first? Okay. You know, every community is different, obviously, you know, how you interact with your citizens. Oftentimes, we see community-wide surveys, sometimes there's polling. A lot of times, though, that doesn't happen until you start to understand what the funding mechanisms might be. I think that's really something that internally needs to be addressed because it's going to be hard for taxpayers in the room to not know what taxpaying they're being asked to do. So, I would, I recommend that as an internal next step with, it doesn't have to be a full plan, it just has to be a decision to go forward and things to start looking at to understand where the political will and the community will is in support.
In, in terms of the funding, I would add too that there have been, I'm not making any promises here, but there have been trial requests from the private sector to look at public-private partnerships on this. And I think, you know, once we start, as councils start making decisions about where we want to go with this, I think we may see more of that. But we have been approached in an inquisitive manner, not saying we're, we're in, they just, they want to, they're interested and they want to be, want to look at it to be part of it. No more questions here. From the Normal Council, I take a motion for adjournment. Moved by Councilman McBride, seconded by Councilwoman Lorenz. All in favor, say aye. Normal is adjourned.
Is there a motion to adjourn the Bloomington City Council? Moved by Alderwoman Hauman, seconded by Alderwoman Schmidt. All in favor, signified by saying aye. Opposed? Sounds like we're adjourned, too. Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for coming.